Good morning, everyone. It is 10:30 a.m., which is the time we scheduled for a work session. It is Tuesday, December 19th, 2023, and we are in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, 1415 Melody Lane, Building G Bisbee, Arizona 85603, pursuant to ARS 38-431.02H. The public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Role call, District One. District Two.
Supervisor English is present.
And for District Three, I am Supervisor Judd. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items. Oh, I skipped a part. Oh, well, with the Board of Supervisors and public comment will not be taken. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app, or via phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714, conference ID 44039071. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, please call 520-432-9200 for direction. And for introductions, we, it's basically just us speaking, and since it's all the board and staff here, administrative staff, I'm going to just introduce Mr. Tim Maddox. He is our Elections Director, and we're so familiar with him because he was our clerk, and we loved him. I just want to say. So, thank you, and we'll let you have the floor now to, to give us your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. So I'm here to give you just an update on the department's activities. And so we have three elections in 2024, and as we get closer to each of the elections, we'll be releasing updated information about each, such as important dates and deadlines. One thing that I would like to note today is that the March 19th election is the Presidential Preference election, and the PPE, or Presidential Preference, is not like the primaries in Arizona. And so for the PPE, only those voters who are registered to vote with either the Republican or the Democratic parties are eligible to vote in the election. Independents, no party preference, are those who are registered with a member of a party not participating or not eligible to participate in the PPE. And we'll include that in all of our messaging again as we get closer to the, the election. So the Elections Department has been focusing on working on preparing for the, the PPE, the Presidential Preference. We've been building the, the ballots with candidate names in the order that they were drawn by the Secretary of State, which happened yesterday. And yesterday was a deadline that we had to build the ballots, get the ballots built and submitted, and so we did meet that deadline after the, the names were selected in the order that they'll appear on the ballot. We've also been performing statutory duties. An example of that is the sample ballot information needed to be provided to the state's political party chairs today, and we did send those out this morning to the political party chairs, as well as a courtesy copy to the candidates' representatives for each of the parties participating. We've been focusing on working closer with the, the political parties here in Cochise County. We've been working with the party chairman to verify that the precinct committee men lists are up to date and trying to take those to the board to make sure that we have all updates that have gone through the, the board. I will be meeting with the party chairs in January to review dates, timelines, deadlines, and forms required for the elections in 2024. And so that meeting with both party chairs is January 12th. For poll workers, we are updating the poll worker training material and focusing on recruiting poll workers for all of the elections in 2024. We have reached out to those who worked for us at the 2022 general election now to try to encourage people who have worked at the polls to come back and work with us again. We also have our application online and open to individuals who are interested in becoming a poll worker to, to complete and submit that. To date, we currently have approximately 120 who are confirmed to work at the polls for the March PPE, and we are anticipating that we would need up to 250. So we're going to be focused on recruitment even more than we have been trying to get the, the numbers up. And I was hoping to ask the board also, as you are talking to your constituents and contacts throughout the community, if you could just let the individuals know that on our website, we do have the poll worker application and kind of encourage people to, to apply. We do have a county policy that authorizes employees to serve as election poll workers, and that's Policy Number 2216. And one of the things I was hoping to get direction from the board today is to possibly look at expanding that, and I'll talk more about that in more detail in a couple of slides. But that way, we can use county employees more than we have been able to in the past to help out in different roles at the, at the polls and the, the boards that we need for Election Day. And so we are also starting to recruit the various bipartisan boards who work with us in the office during the election, and those are like the early ballot boards, the duplication boards, and we're expecting to have them start to work with us in the late February timeframe for the PPE. And then we've been working on reviewing and updating various documents and information and resources on our website, and that is going to be kind of ongoing. We want to make sure that we have the most timely and accurate information that's available to the public, so that is kind of an ongoing process that, that we'll still be focusing on. So messaging, we've been working on messaging efforts with the, the County Recorder's Office, with County Administration, and the, the County's Public Information Officer to ensure that we are providing consistent and accurate messaging about all of the elections. We did develop a messaging plan for the PPE coming up in March, and we are working on finalizing a comprehensive frequently asked questions document that'll be kind of a standalone resource for people to download that has just very detailed information about elections beyond kind of the important dates. The dates are included in there, but it goes a little bit beyond that and covers some of the questions that come up frequently for both the Recorder's Office and the Elections Department about the duties that each is responsible for. And then for the, the messaging and kind of some outreach efforts, we are working in partnership with Cochise College and also Election Systems and Software, and we will be hosting two public sessions on January 17th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. So 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on January 17th, 2024, at Cochise College, the Sierra Vista Campus. And at these sessions, the Vice President of Security for Election Systems and Software, or ESNS, he will present a demonstration of ESNS's equipment, give a presentation on the security of the equipment, and then there will be a question and answer session with the, the public. And so we would just like to encourage attendance at those events so that individuals can, can ask questions directly from the, the vendor and get kind of the, the expert answers. We will begin advertising the, the event soon, so you'll be seeing messaging going out, both from the county and I believe the, the college all as well. And so again, that event is going to be January 17th at 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. at Cochise College.
Is that in Sierra Vista?
At the Sierra Vista, yes. And then for the candidate filings, I'll go into more information at our next work session as we get closer to the, the candidate filing period. But for now, just a couple of quick updates that I wanted to give to the board. So we've reviewed and updated the Campaign Finance Report's webpage to ensure that all of the reports and forms that have been filed by the committees are posted online and, and available. The other thing I wanted to mention is the signature requirements for the candidates are anticipated to be available in mid-January. Those are based on the voter registration totals as of January 2nd, and so that's coming up pretty, pretty quickly now, and we will have those available online as soon as they're, as soon as they're available. On the next slide, I wanted to talk a little bit about the, the wait time reduction plan. So that is outlined in statute as well as the Elections Procedure Manual. The officer in charge of elections must establish and approve a specific wait time reduction plan to ensure that voters do not have to wait in lines at the voting locations for more than 30 minutes. There are various methods that are outlined in statute to consider when you're looking at establishing this plan. The reason that we are looking at it is that we did have some of our vote centers back at the November 2022 election report wait times of greater than 30 minutes. And so we are looking at various options. The Elections Procedure Manual further details things for the election officials to consider as you're looking at the wait time reduction plan. And for the, for the county, I think probably the most feasible option to look at is really the, the supplies and equipment and staffing. So that is kind of what we have been focusing on, on, on our end. The wait times, unfortunately, I wish that I could say that there was some kind of a pattern where all of the vote centers experienced wait times from, say, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., right when the polls opened, or at kind of towards the end of the day, 5:00 to 7:00. But in looking at the data that was reported to us from November, it happened throughout the day. There's no pattern whatsoever, unfortunately. At one location, it could be right at the start of the day, the next location, it could be midday, and that sort of thing. So there's no pattern that we were able to, to identify. A number of the inspectors indicated that the propositions that had to be read through could have been a factor for the, the waits because there were quite a few propositions on the ballot in, in November 2022. We did have some who reported that they thought the equipment could be improved upon. So a number of them, nine actually requested an additional express vote machine at the, at the vote centers. And then some of them also, I believe it was maybe two or three of them reported they had difficulties getting the equipment up from the morning, and so then that caused a delay kind of right from the get-go, that then it was a little bit tough to recover from as the, the day went on. And so, as, as I mentioned, the supplies, equipment, and staffing are some things that I would really like to, to look at. So as I mentioned, the policy to use staff, it's, I would like direction from the board to, to be able to have that policy be more that all of the appointive offices shall be, shall participate in this, so that if we need to call individuals from departments, that they would be available to us. So we're hoping for direction from the board on that. One of the things I would be looking to do would be to add a shift of troubleshooters so that each of the vote centers would have a troubleshooter onsite at 5:00 a.m. to help them get set up with all of the equipment and make sure that everything's running before the, the polls open. So that would require additional staff that we would be looking to, to use for that. And then we would also be looking at splitting the troubleshooter assignments throughout the day. We've received some reports that in some cases, the troubleshooter has to go kind of far in between vote centers, and there are areas where maybe cellphone reception is not the best, and so the vote centers has not been able to get a hold of them in a timely manner. And so we're going to be looking at changing those assignments and, and hopefully being able to use additional staff for that. And then the other side of this are the supplies. So as I had mentioned, nine of the vote centers requested an additional express vote. And so I think a safe number to increase would be 10, because we do have the additional vote center now that'll be using some of the spare express votes that we have. And then 10 of the additional, like the e-poll books and, and the associated printers with those. And then that would still leave us with a couple of spares that we could have on hand to run out to one of the vote centers if anything were to go down at a vote center where we would need to, to replace anything. The, there is an estimated one-time cost for those 10 express votes, e-poll books, and the associated equipment of approximately $71,000. We would be able to cover a portion of that from the elections budget, but would need to request a budget transfer if the board would like to provide direction for us to, to move that way.
I'm sorry, I, I need to ask, is the state in any way able to help whenever we have excessive wait times? Is there a fund or, you know, kind of a rescue place where you could go? They require we not have wait times, so.
Right, they, they require us to kind of monitor and, and reduce them, but at, at this time, I have not been able to fully look into the, the different grants that they have, but I don't, off the top of my head, I don't believe that there's a specific grant that would really be able to help us address this specific need. And then so for ongoing contracts and, and projects for the Elections Department, ESNS is for the ongoing support, maintenance, and training of staff. And again, that's, ESNS is the Election Systems and Software. We're working with procurement to get a contract in place with Run Back Election Services for the sample ballots and the, the ballots that are printed for early voting and the office copies as well, and we hope to have that in place soon. And then U.S. Digital Response, which is a new, a new contract for the Elections Department that was entered into earlier this year. That one provides, it provides an internal election management tool that assists in a couple of areas of, of interest, and that is in managing the poll workers. And then it could be used also to assist in managing the Campaign Finance Report reminders, dates, and deadlines for, for those.
So it's a program?
It, it's a program, correct.
It's not really used on Election Day just to kind of organize the poll workers and the financing?
Right, and it, it does have a component that, that we would not be looking at implementing in a major election year like this, where it could be used for, say, the poll workers to report a problem electronically, but that aspect of it is a little bit newer in the system, and so it would be kind of a dramatic shift for our poll workers also to get used to that, and so that would not be something that would, we would be looking at using it for in 2024. And then I wanted to just give a quick update. So the Elections and Special Districts Department is also the, the Special Districts Coordinator for the, the county. And so the special districts that I'm referring to here are the Title 48 Special Taxing Districts that each have their own governing boards. They're required by statute to file certain documents with the county, and then they will typically contract with the county to, to conduct their elections on, on their behalf. One of the things that we've been working on with County Treasurer Kathy Traywick and her staff, they're, they're helping us to again review and update the Special District Resource Manual that we try to put out every year that serves as kind of a comprehensive guide for all of the special districts on what they need to file, when. So we're working with the County Treasurer on updating that. And then there is one deadline for special districts approaching their annual report, which needs to be filed by February 25th. And so we've reached out to all the special districts, given them a reminder of that, that that deadline is coming up, and we have started to receive some of the annual reports from them already at this point.
What do you do if you don't receive a report?
If, if we don't, we start to follow up with them again. There is a little bit of time after that February 25th deadline, but by March 31st, we do have to report to the governor, the president of the Senate, and the Speaker of the House at the, at the state level as to the special districts who did file the reports and those who, who did not. But we do attempt to reach out to them multiple times to remind them that we do need that report. And that concludes my presentation today. Be happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask about you wanting us to put in place that the employees shuttle. And I'm, I'm wondering if we're, might be jumping the gun on that a little bit, and we, we want the election to take place, we want to have enough people, but I'd first like to have a better recruitment from departments and department heads before we think about requiring. So think about dates that and processes that you could do with, maybe you come to a department head meeting and explain, or something that you could send to all departments that would let them know that. And I'm hoping that you don't think that department heads wouldn't allow people to participate and let we force them to, because Brett could take care of that.
Yes, and, and we are going to have a meeting with the directors this week and to inform the directors of this need for additional election workers and to go through their staff and not only make it optional, but see what they can do to create a skeleton crew for that day in their department and see what, what options they could get to have people help and assist. So we're going to be working in that manner, but I know it was important to mention that fact, especially to reach out to all your constituents and people that are interested and apply, you know, we need help, so.
Well, we want to keep county government moving forward, so if we don't have to take county employees. The, the one other question that I had was, how much training is necessary for someone to be considered to be a troubleshooter at a polling place? Because we do have people probably in each department that are, are familiar with, you know, computers, but I don't know that that's enough for them to be considered to be a troubleshooter.
And, and that's a very good question. So what we would do is, we currently conducted the training sessions that are three hours. There's one training session that is geared specifically towards the inspectors and the troubleshooters that goes into more detail on the equipment setup. So that's a three-hour training session, and we would request that the staff attend that also to become familiar with the specific setup of the equipment.
Mr. Maddox, is there no libertarians running for president or just not enough adequate or inadequate representation of libertarians in this county? Or I think you just, go ahead.
Supervisor Crosby, so the Libertarian Party and, and the, as well as the two major parties, the Republicans and the Democratic Parties, there is a deadline in which the parties need to file with the Secretary of State, need to notify them of their participation in the Presidential Preference election. And so this year, the two parties that did inform the Secretary of State that they were going to participate were the Democratic and the Republican Parties, the Libertarian Party did not.
Thank you. What other sources are there for our ballot mailing besides Run Back that anybody has considered?
That there are some other sources out there, and I apologize Supervisor Crosby, I don't have the, the name of the, the companies available at this point. It's coordinated between the two departments, between the Elections and the County Recorder's Office.
Could I jump in right here and say Run Back is the place where all of that ballot paper that Mr. Stevens bought seems to be residing? Is that ballot paper that can be used to defray the cost of this election, or is it just?
And that, that I'm not able to speak to today. I think that may be something more appropriate if we check with the County Recorder on.
I think that's a valid, a valid concern there. Because that might help us, that might help us get our elections done cheaper. Yes, it's your turn again.
I will continue to support precinct voting. The primary consideration has to be trust in the system, and that issue is not going to go away. I'm also in favor of a requirement to present ID for return of early ballots as much as possible to decrease the equal protection concerns between the two systems that we employ, one requiring ID the day of voting, and the other system of early ballots that doesn't require ID. I haven't figured out how to separate precincts out of vote centers if, if, if there's people voting, you know, across the county and so on, taking advantage of the, the capability that's there. I found the former system without vote centers and without poll books easy enough to determine error, which I did in 2012, and that's going to be missing if we continue with the proposed system. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. I don't really have anything else. I, I do have something I'm going to ask Recorder Stevens now, so, but I guess I, I want to appreciate you for kind of taking the, the lead again or the, the helm of the special districts. So, thank you. It helps me to direct them somewhere because I have found over the years, if anything I have found, I've found I don't know anything about special districts, not enough to help them. So, anyway, thank you.
I think you wanted more direction regarding the.
I was going to ask about the money that you need. How much do you need?
So we, we anticipate it would be approximately $50,000 to $55,000 that we would need.
I think that you will find, and I'm, I'm, I'm hoping I'm echoing the board sentiment here, is that that isn't our first concern when we're looking at elections, and if the, the, the need is there, and I think that if you, if you ask for it, you know, the money will be made available to make sure that the design that you're proposing and the needs that are in each one of these vote centers are met, whatever the amount is.
Okay, thank you.
I also, I want to kind of accomplish or accompany that with, that it is a statute that we meet that requirement, and it's very sad that we're not. You know, I've witnessed that, and that's been one of the major complaints about elections and, and vote centers, is that they would have to wait so long.
One of the things that concerns me is the fact that, you know, there is a, a statute with a specific time period, and I have noticed that there are people that come in to vote and will spend as much as 40 minutes themselves on the machine, and you can't control that. You can't go over and say, hurry up. So it, it's, it's kind of hard to meet those two things, to allow people to take as long as they need to make those decisions. I mean, we wish they'd read it ahead of time, but if they don't, they don't. And then on the other hand, to meet the legislature's need for us to get them out in 30 minutes. So we'll, we'll always have to deal with that.
Can we add that in our information campaign? Maybe just a neat little brightly colored postcard that comes out the same time as the, the, or the sample ballot?
It probably won't matter in the Presidential Preference, because they don't have all of these things to read, but I think it's something that we need to.
For the general election especially.
In our messaging to, to talk about the amount of time that they take and not wanting them to not know what's going on, but information is out ahead of time.
I wonder how I can get the, the, this email from you that, that you provided me with that had to do with certification by the board versus by the special district out to my colleagues without just having to read it here? You know the one I'm talking about?
I, I do, I do remember that, that email, and it's something I think that I can forward over to the, the clerk of the board for dissemination to the, the supervisors.
Okay, then we'll just do that, then it has to do with what I, what I consider to be some wordsmithing, which is attempting to turn the word canvas into certify the canvas, which is not, those two, those two are separate items. And so you'll see where, what I'm talking about when, when this gets forwarded to you, I guess it has to do with certifications under 16647. certifications under 16647 and certifications under ARS 11 dash 251 and the differences.
Well, is there any other comments or questions at this time?
I just want to reiterate, I know we talked about it a couple of times, but I want to keep saying it. We need more poll workers. So please, everyone, if people are listening, people that are present, please tell your friends, families, neighbors. You know, we need more poll workers, need more poll workers. On my end, I will reach out to the directors and the elected officials and their staff to see who can possibly help.
I've forgotten, and I I probably should remember this, but I don't think the amount that is paid to a poll worker has changed. But if people ask that question, what's the answer?
The the answer to that is specifically for the majority of the positions is, I believe, $120, and that's for the clerk, the judges, the marshal, and then the inspector gets paid a little bit more because they're in charge of the poll, and then they have to come in, pick up the ballots and and do a little bit extra work. And I believe that amount is maybe 160 and a little bit higher, depending on the the driving time that they have.
Well, that's what I was wondering, because if we're establishing, you know, the vote centers and we need more people in San Simo, and the people that are available are in Douglas, are we paying mileage to get them there?
We we would in in that case, yes, yes, if there is that that distance that they are having to travel.
Well, it it could be Palmorine, or it could be, you know, but I don't know where the extra people will be because obviously they're not around that vote center.
Well, we we need to try to recruit in that general area. And then when we do that, training, I know in the past you've taken training out to to the eastern northeastern part of the county. Do they always have to come to Bisbee to be trained?
My understanding is historically, as of recently, that that has been the practice because of the equipment that's set up and the where it is here at the the Bisbee office.
Okay, because I remember training going out, but that could have been, you know, a dozen or so years ago. And then are they paid the day that they come to training?
They they are paid for training, correct.
Okay. Those are good things to know.
What happened to the Wilcox School election issue? I expected to see that by now. Is that that not going to come before the board?
That Madam Chair Supervisor Crosby, that does not come to the the board. There's a different statute on how that is that is canvassed.
So with with the volunteers, is there any necessary ratios between the parties like that we talked about back a year ago?
Is.
Like if such such a number of Republicans, you have to have at least such and such number of Democrats, for instance.
Yes, we we do need for the poll workers, we do need kind of the balance between the between the parties. In some cases, we may not have the exact amount from the two major parties, but Democratic Party representatives, for example, could be replaced by independents or individuals registered with other parties.
I I knew there was an issue there. I wasn't sure what it was. So do you where go ahead and forward me the rules about that while you're in it, because I'm curious, so I can pass it along to party representatives.
Very informative. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. Thank you. So I believe that will conclude. If there's any other comments, speak now. Okay, our next meeting will be January 2, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. in the Board of Supervisors hearing room for a special meeting, and this meeting is now adjourned.